Do I have a motion to accept our agenda? We have a new version that's at our desk. Oh, and as a quick heads up or reminder with the microphones, they're on mute, and if you need to unmute, you just hit that unmute button, and then they're voice activated. So when you make a motion, remember to unmute. You have a second? All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item is the approval of the June 27, 2019 minutes. Have everyone had a chance to review those? And do I have a motion to approve? Motion moved, seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The next item is recognition of council members. And I think we have several here. Councilman Davis, do you want to go now or wait? Okay. Councilman Pridemore? Okay. And Councilman Syracuse. And yes, he found our podium.
Oh, the red button. There we go. Thank you very much. How are you all doing? Very good. I'm actually not here about anything about my district, but I wanted to talk about the South Nashville Community Plan Amendment, because it is the gateway right into Donaldson. So I've had a very vested interest in where this area is headed over the next decade or more. So I know that we had one South Nashville Community Plan Amendment that was withdrawn. I know it's going to be coming back, but know that I'm just following it very carefully, and I'm fundamentally supportive of the transition of this area from industrial to ultimately office or mixed use or whatnot. I think it's a positive thing in and around the Tennessee Central Railway Museum. So I think it's ultimately a positive thing. The next piece of the South Nashville Community Plan Amendment is the city side area. And as you might recall, we spent a lot of time last year updating the community plan on my side of Lebanon Pike regarding the city side area that goes from Fessler's to Bradley Parkway. So this is really complimentary to that. They've worked extraordinarily hard on this, and I do support it fully and appreciate your consideration of that. I know it's on consent. The last thing is in the 13th District. As some of you know, I've been very involved in this. I know this is going to be deferred, but this particular project has one of probably 30 pre-1865 properties on it left in Davidson County. The current development that is going through council now is ultimately going to connect to this. So my main concern, aside from the lack of council representation in the 13th District, is the fact that it is the most historic site in the 13th District. It is sitting right next to the only park in the 13th District, and a lot of those neighbors have called me very concerned about this project. So I do appreciate that you have deferred this. I did meet with the developer, the property owner, this past Monday, and I believe that we have worked out something that ultimately will come back to you that helps preserve this 1850s property. So I just wanted to thank you for deferring this, and when this comes back, just make sure that we are very sensitive of the nature of this property and that it ensures that we protect that 1850s property. Thank you very much.
Any other council members that we've missed? Okay. The next item is the items for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa?
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. Item number one, 2019Z 006TX 001 on page five of your agenda. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number six, 2018CP 011002 on page six of your agenda. The South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number seven, 2019CP 005002 on page six. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 26 Planning Commission meeting. Item number eight, 2019SP 027001, the Roots East SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine, 2019SP 045001, 2500 West Hyman Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the September 12 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10A, 2019SP 046001, the Skyline East SP. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. The associated case, 10B, it's a PUD cancellation, 2003P 015002. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 11, 2019SP 048001 on page seven, the Cedars of Kane Ridge SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 13, 2019S 109001, Richards Farms subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 14, 19169P 001 on page seven, the Priest Lake Center PUD amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 15, 2019HP 001001 on page eight of your agenda. Staff Marathon Village. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 16, 2019Z 094PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 18, 2019S 128001, McGavick Pike Hamlet. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 20, 6177P 003 on page nine, the Gifford Commercial PUD Revision and Final. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item 21, 2019NHL 001 on page nine, the Gist Pizza Neighborhood Landmark. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 meeting. Item number 28, 2019DTC 018001 on page 10 of your agenda, the Hotel Indigo Expansion. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 22 Planning Commission meeting. And I would like to mention that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from this item. I would also like to mention that the next meeting on August 22 is also located here at the Midtown Hills Police Precinct. So any items that have been deferred to that date will be heard here on August 22.
You, Lisa. Commissioners, we've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. The next item is item F, and that is the consent agenda.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number three, 2016SP 024003 on page five of your agenda, the McGavick House SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number four, 2018Z 087PR 001 on page five of your agenda. Staff recommendation is to approve the second substitute. Item number 17, 2019CP 011002 on page eight of your agenda, the South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2019Z 121PR 001 on page nine of your agenda. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to MUNA for properties located on Fern Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 24, 2019Z 122PR 001 on page nine. It's a request to rezone from IR to MUGA for property located on Great Circle Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2019Z 123PR 001 on page 10. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property located on Clifton Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 27, 2019Z 125PR 001 on page 10 of your agenda. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to MUGA for property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and to approve MUNA under other business on page 10 of your agenda. Item 29, employee contract renewals for David Klein, Jennifer Higgs, John Broome, Nick Lindeman, and Michael Briggs. Item number 30, an employee contract amendment for Kareemee Sharp. And item number 34, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. So we have heard the items on the consent agenda. And just to recap, we have items three, four, 17, 19, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 30, and 34.
19 was... 19 and 22 were not.
Were not, okay.
And nor was... Yeah, 19 and 22 were not.
19 and 22 were not. Okay. So items three, four, 17, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 30, and 34.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Any other discussion? Okay. Motion carries. Yes. So the items that we'll be hearing tonight, just to confirm, we've got items two, five, 12, 19, 22, and 26. Is that correct? Oh, I think I forgot. Did I forget the vote?
That's correct.
Okay. You know what? I forgot our vote on the consent agenda. We had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Item two.
Good afternoon. Item number two is a zone change request for 1804 and 1806 Lishy Avenue. The request is to change zoning from RS5 to SP. The properties are highlighted in red. Staff's recommendation, approve a second substitute with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning on the property is RS5. Surrounding zoning is SP to the north, RS5 to the east, south, and west. The property is approximately 2.3 acres in size. Little history on the property. In January of 2019, the Planning Commission recommended disapproval of a straight zone change for these two properties. At that time, the request was to change the zoning from RS5 to RM20. The case went to the Metro Council, where it was converted to an SP and re-referred back to the Planning Commission. That's why it's here tonight. At the time the SP was converted, it still permitted the uses, all uses permitted by RM20 zoning, with the exception that short-term rental, not owner occupied and owner occupied shall be prohibited. So between that time and now, additional conditions have been placed on the SP in regards to design standards. We're looking at setbacks, glazing, and the dedication of alley right-of-way. The property is located in a T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy. And this is also within the Highland Heights Study area. As a reminder, the Highland Heights Study supplemental policy was recently approved and adopted by the Planning Commission. This was done on June 14 of 2018. There was extensive community engagement. It established a supplementary building regulating plan and a mobility plan. The community character policy for this site did not change policies at that time. It was neighborhood evolving, and it still is neighborhood evolving. Before you, it was the building regulating plan. The property is now... I'm just trying to find the pointer. Hold on here. Property is highlighted in red. It's in a darker orange section. This is the R4 sub-district. The R4 sub-district supports a range of residential uses. It includes two-family, multifamily at varying intensities depending on the location, context, and presence of infrastructure. What is circled over here to the right is you can see that the SP... Excuse me. The SP still proposes RM20 density. In this case, that would permit a maximum of 46 units. And as you can see from this chart, that the R4 sub-district does support this amount of intensity. A part of the Highland Heights Study included a mobility plan. The property now is highlighted in yellow. I'm trying to still forget the pointer here. Bear with me. Lishy Avenue is directly to, on the eastern property line of this property. It's identified as a Collector Avenue street on the Major and Collector Street Plan. Lishy also has transit stops. And this mobility plan identifies the need to provide a public alley connection along that southern portion of Lishy Avenue, of 1804 Lishy to be specific. Here it is. I found the pointer right there. All right. The proposed SP includes a condition that requires 20 feet of alley right-of-way along the entire southern property line at 1804 Lishy, which would be consistent with the Highland Heights plan. Access is limited to the future alley right-of-way. So there'd be only one access to the site. The blue line indicates the general location of the alley network in this area. A thing to remember about alleys is that they have to have an outlet onto a public street. In this case, we had the opportunity to get an outlet onto Lishy, which is the Collector Street, versus the outlet going south to Edith. Now, this is a slight modification, but it still meets the goals of the plan. Proposed alleys are also located along the property lines. So both properties to the north and to the south could be served by the future alley. And at this location, the future alley will allow the properties to the south to access from the alley should they redevelop. Commissioners, you received a memo today. It has a revised condition on that. It revises a setback condition. So the new condition is that setbacks from Lishy Avenue shall be a minimum of 20 feet and a maximum of 40 feet. So you have that memo in front of you. Staff's recommendation is to approve a second substitute with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including the revised conditions that you have. As the proposed rezoning at this location is consistent with the guidance of the T4 neighborhood evolving policy and the supplemental policies of the Highland Heights Study.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If you come forth to the podium. And thank you for working with us. It's a unique setup for all of us.
Good evening, Metro Council. Metro Council. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jessica Williams. I am the applicant and the developer on this project. I started this project almost three years ago. It'll be three years in February of 2020. I live in the neighborhood. My address is 2115 Yaman Place at Fifth and Main Condos, where I've lived in District 5 for the last seven years. I'm in real estate and have a love for smart growth development and understanding how cities grow and how to create different housing choices for all different income types. I came across this property and have been in the rezone process for quite some time. With working with the planning staff, in the council, in the community, we have removed short terminals from the application as not even just... Not even non-owner... We... Sorry. We took out non-owner occupant and occupant short terminals, which was a huge compromise, as well as doing an alley dedication on the property as well. And so we also met the conditions with the setbacks and working with our engineers, our architects. And we just have a really good, strong team behind us. And we are just hoping that we can move this forward to approval. It has been an extremely long process. I've learned a lot through the process. I've enjoyed working with the planning staff, the planning desk, the council members, the community. I mean, I've worked through a lot of different processes. And so I just ask that this can be moved forward to approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I can ask, is there anyone here speaking in support of the project? Please come forth to the podium. You'll have two minutes, and if you can state your name and address. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Carol Campbell, Like the Soup. My address is 700 Strickland Drive in Nashville. And that is also at the Fifth and Main Condos. I am a co-founder of a nonprofit organization called Leave the Light On Foundation. It is a nonprofit that helps both seniors and caregivers and anyone else in need. I have known Jessica Williams for about five years, and she has been involved with our organization since that time. And one of the things that has really drawn me to any project that Jessica is working on is that she is always gung-ho in helping the community. One of the things that we talked about with her development projects, whether it's this one or any other development projects, is that she has committed a certain percentage of funding from the sale of any properties to go toward helping caregivers and seniors. So this project, I of course am supporting, because once it's done, we will take a percentage of the proceeds, and we will actually identify people in the community to help them. We have already started identifying people, whether it is a caregiver or... And let me just clarify what a caregiver is. Someone who's taking care of mom, or dad, or grandma, or a disabled child, or a veteran. And so we're looking everything from, is this person hungry? Or is this person in need of a new roof? And so we will be using a percentage of that proceeds from the sale of this property to help those people in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can give us your name and address, then you'll have two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I'm Reverend Enix Fuzz. My address, I live at 903 33rd Avenue North. Now my two minutes start, right? Okay. Thank you. I want to thank you all for being these kind of volunteers. These are boring kinds of meetings to me. And when I come to them and see people serving these boards, I have to compliment you and commend you for doing that. And to our city council members who are here, probably. I met Jessica Williams through One Nashville, an organization that we work to bring different ideas together, different views in the room. I spent a lot of hours looking at this project and looking at her. Over 45 years of being like in community involvement, I met so many people, who was, many of them dead and gone now, but they were heroes. And Jessica is one of those kind of folk that I picked up. Nashville have an opportunity to have good people here. And I come across really great people. I know this city has made a commitment to folk. That young lady knows what she's talking about. I would hope that our city would learn to work with people like that. I've seen so many pastors churches that the city didn't work with. They should have. I'm not going to say any reasons, but I believe that this young developer is a benefit to us. And if we're going to build this city, my research from starting this project have shown me so many negatives in other cities who follow our path, and a lot of positives in cities that didn't have so much regulating. I've met with so many developers who complain about how difficult it is. Even this morning, I had one. And I used to think that a city would build a sidewalk or... What's he doing, bales and stuff? What is that? Your clock fails or something. But anyway...
That's our two minutes.
Y'all helped make this happen. I know a lot of people might be against it or not, but this is a smart person and good for our city.
Thank you so much.
And thank y'all for serving. My cameraman, you do good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak in support of Jessica. I am in support of Jessica.
Can you give us our name and address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Barbara Redwine, and I own the property at 3301 Batavia Street. It's a triplex. I am in support of Jessica Williams and her vision for the landscape for the community of Nashville. Jessica has been the subject of interest among us who have admired her tenacity and her passion for urban development. In a field still dominated by men much, much, much older than she, Jessica is learning. She began this project when she was in her early twenties, her late twenties, and now she is in her early thirties. It has taken her almost three years of her valuable, young, and gifted life to get to this stage when, by comparison, those of a different sex and a more inherent advantage have done it in half the time. I want to thank you for encouraging this young lady who has approached this project professionally from many, many angles. Armed with her business degree and her business acumen, her real estate license, and her ability to sell, she has embraced the concept of smart growth development. She feels that this plan is perfect for the Trinity Lishy Project, where condos, single-family dwellings, and townhouses are in need. And thank you again for encouraging Jessica as she treads this uncharted land of male-dominated developing. She's chosen Nashville to be the city to share her unique approach to development. And she is young, and we need youth. This is what young people do. They bring new ideas. They bring a new infusion to old ideas, and they give life to new projects. Thank you.
Start with your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Sims, and I live at 1813 Pearl Street. I met Jessica maybe a little over a year ago. Our paths continue to cross because we both have, share the same passion and interest in this city that we love. We were both very much engaged in transportation issues in the community, as well as affordable housing projects. I learned a little later on that she was actually very instrumental in my youngest son purchasing his first home. I did not know her then, but that was a pleasant surprise to me. One thing that I've noticed about Jessica is her work ethic. She has been diligent and faithful, plowing away, trying to make this project work in East Nashville. And I respect that. So I'm hoping that you will take into careful consideration the work that she's done, the good intention that she has for what appears to be a good development project in East Nashville. And I am in full support of what she's doing and what she will continue to do down the line. Thank you.
You.
Hello. My name is Lisa Springer. I reside in my home at 3257 Rainwood Drive, which is here in Nashville. I'll shortly say, thank you for this opportunity as well. As a long-term resident in East Nashville, and also as a native here in Nashville, I do support this project. I would say, as we were looking for homes, and Jessica being my Realtor, I did notice also that the inventory is very low. It's just I recently purchased my first home outside of the area. It would be great for more housing options to come available and come to our marketplace here in Nashville. It has a recommendation of approval, and I'm excited to see that this specific project is approved after many years, because she has put a lot of time into this. And I really, truly do believe in what she sees with that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Jordan Williams, and I live on 66 Ketterich Lane. And I know Jessica because she is my aunt, and I'm her niece. And so I really do think that she deserves this moment because she has worked so hard in life, and she has helped so many people, including my dad and people in our family. Also, she does not give up on what her... On her dream, and was so inspired to be here. And she thinks that she could do an amazing job of working with you all and helping others. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon.
My name is Taurus McKean. I reside at 3021 Barnet View Boulevard. I'm a developer. I've done, most notably, Mr. Winfrey's Barbershop in East Nashville. Lived in East Nashville, I'm a native Nashvillian. Mostly, I've done a lot of work in Salem Town. I was one of the first developers in Salem Town. And I too received the type of pushback from the community when I was looking to increase Salem Town, and tried to advise Jessica on moving this project forward. And looking at the project with the base zoning being R-20, and the Roxworth Group getting the R-20 base zoning next door, and with her asking for the same base zoning, and I think that's, you all should stay consistent with that. You know, I've seen you all recommend projects before, and then the community comes up, and it's amazing, you know, how a few residents can change you all's opinion, despite you all's rationale for recommending it. And I'm really, I'm dressed up today because of the voter suppression laws that Tennessee voted for and then clapped after they voted for suppressing the laws. I protested and was arrested. Fortunately, the case was dismissed earlier today, so I'm really concerned about equity. Okay? That's all.
You. Anyone else speaking in support? Yes.
My name is Kim Tucker, and I live at 512 North Second Street in Nashville, East Nashville. It's going to be quick. Basically, I'm just saying that so many people moved to East Nashville when it was affordable. When it was affordable, it was a terrible place to live, but we stuck it out. Now that it's a nice, thriving place to be, and she's building some affordable housing, how can you not say yes to that? Finally, people who have been there their whole entire lives have an opportunity to live in a place not crime-ridden. We like to join in on that, too. Nashville is thriving. Let us thrive with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in support? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forward, and I think you know the drill. Two minutes. Start with your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Gordon Stacy Harmon. I reside at 1826 Joy Circle. As chairperson of the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association, I kindly request five minutes for my comments. Please refer to the packets that are being distributed to you guys. First and foremost, I'd like to say, I do appreciate Jessica Williams and her dedication to do what she's trying to do. However, we are not here to talk about the person, we are here to talk about the project. I'd like to recap the history of the zoning application. I know Letitia went over it just a little bit beforehand. This case came before you on January 10th, asking for RM20. Staff analysis called out two primary reasons for the recommendation of disapproval. One, RM20 density was not appropriate as, quote, "Given the location at the easternmost edge of the R4 sub-district, RM20 zoning would permit up to 46 units on the subject parcels." RM20 zoning does not provide a transition from the lower-intensity R3 sub-district within the T4 neighborhood maintenance policy directly across Lishy Avenue. Two, quote, "Currently, there is no alley right-of-way for this area. RM20 zoning does not guarantee the dedication of alley right-of-way, as identified as a need in the Highland Heights study. Without the infrastructure prescribed by the mobility plan, the requested is inappropriate." Now, your deliberation at that time focused as much or more on the density question as it did on the inclusion of the alley right-of-way. A discussion on the possibility of short-term rental usage of these units was also part of the deliberations. Based on those points, your decision at the time was to disapprove RM20. Since then, the subsequent bill went before council. Councilmember Davis amended the bill to an SP. Short-term rentals were removed, and after several more discussions, the alley right-of-way and other conditions on setbacks and buffers have been added. At no time has the applicant, developer, and/or spokesperson ever worked truly with neighbors to collaborate on a compromise for this property. Have there been meeting with neighbors? Yes. Has there been any feedback or comments that have changed the intentions? No. We had meetings prior to the January public hearing, where we asked for a change to SP so concerns could be addressed, and agreeable solutions put in writing. We were told that wasn't going to happen. We had meetings prior to the council bill's introduction, and again expressed our concerns about density, alley location, buffer zones. Yet again, we were told there was no change to the application. Only when presented with the possibility that RM20 would not be approved by council did any real work altering the plan actually happen. And here we are, a modified application that has done the barest minimum to get approval. Density has not been addressed. With the potential for a maximum of 46 units, there's no transition as originally debated. The proposed alley is the least width possible to accommodate two-way traffic, and the location runs incredibly close to two homes that border the property. Letitia, could you put up my slide? You've got a photo image of it as well, in case you can't see. The neighboring SP, 1801 Meridian, also has an alley designed for a similar purpose, yet that alley is wider at 26 feet. It may be hard to see. The proposed alley is in yellow. What we recommend is in blue. A landscape buffer is proposed to the west boundary, where oddly enough, there's already significant growth of trees and bushes, yet there's no accommodation for the RS5 zone properties on the southern border. Now, these issues and others could have easily been addressed much earlier in this process. Instead, we find ourselves here at the last possible moment, asking this commission for a snap decision to garner approval at council's third reading before the end of this term. Now, aside from the agreement to build the alley, there's been no material change to the application. Forty-six units are still planned. And on behalf of the neighbors most impacted by this zoning, ask for the following additional conditions to be included. One, the alley to be constructed at a width of 26 feet, comparable to the alley in the SP at 1801 Meridian to the north. A 10-to-15-foot landscape buffer of type A1 or type A2 to be included between the southern boundary and the wider alley. And finally, the unit count be specified so that an appropriate transition may happen in adherence to our study and our supplemental plan. We ask for a maximum of 20 to 23 units. It is important to note, this development is mid-block. Now, do these conditions satisfy all our concerns? No. We feel they're reasonable conditions that would allow development to happen in a way that can help preserve and protect the interests of the neighborhood and reduce the negative impact to the neighbors nearest to the property. Now, it goes without saying, one argument for building 46 units is that the profit potential can be maximized. With all due respect to the developer and other parties with a financial investment in this property, there's never a guarantee of maximum profit for any investment. Highland Heights and its residents have no obligation to sacrifice their property values, nor their quiet enjoyment, to ensure that profitability. Now, thank you for the opportunity to present my position and our request. We respectfully ask for you to include these additional conditions to earn your approval. Should the applicant refuse these conditions, we ask you to uphold the previous disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Pratt, 8210 61st Avenue, Kenosha, Wisconsin. I am here today as our family owns the property at 342 Edith Avenue, which directly borders the rezoning lots in question on the southern side. I am also here representing my son, Daniel Pratt, who resides in our house at 342 Edith, as he is not able to be present today. I'm speaking against the proposed zoning change, and I ask you to respectfully consider reasonable conditions to be added as a minimum requirement for approval. Number one, we request that the alley width be increased to 26 feet in width to accommodate public works and emergency vehicles. This is consistent with the approved SP for 1801 Meridian, which borders the properties in question to the north. Number two, we request a landscape buffer, preferably type A1, which would be 15 feet in width, or minimally, type A2, 10 feet in width, to be added on the southern border of the property in question, between the alley and our property line. This would add additional privacy and safety to the RS5 properties on the south. This buffer would be consistent with the current proposal of a buffer on the west side of the properties in question. Once again, we urge the commission to disapprove this rezoning to SP as it is currently proposed. We also respectfully ask that as a minimum qualification for approval, that the additional conditions be added, as I have detailed. Thank you very much for your time.
You.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Ashanti Davis, 315 Edwin Street. Actually, that's my old address, 321 Edwin Street. I actually live very close to this property. I'm on the 300 block of Edwin, which is in between Lishy and Meridian. You know, I've taken a step back from the two-year stint of being before you every week, I mean, every two weeks. I definitely have missed appearing before you all. But this is actually one of the first projects that brought me coming here every meeting. This project, along with the other projects that are in the immediate vicinity of my home, are why I came. And so I felt like I couldn't let this go without coming and telling you that we're definitely not against this developer or a development on these properties. I think our issue is, we're seeing the problems that result when appropriate infrastructure hasn't been put in place, stormwater flooding in your backyard when there's a heavy rain, electrical grid outages because we're on an old electrical grid. So to add additional homes without those type of improvements, it's sort of a sticking point for us. So I think to sum up what we want is essentially a disapproval. We've appeared, I've been appearing on this particular property for two years. A lot of times, it was deferred anytime any opposition came before it. I would show up sometimes to speak out specifically about this rezoning, and then I would appear, and it would be deferred. So I don't want the picture to be painted that somehow this process has been taking so long. Some of those wounds were self-inflicted. The applicant has the right to defer. And if you go back to March 2017, when this was first filed, you can see that this has consistently been deferred. So in the alternative, if you guys say we'll approve it, I do ask that you approve it with the conditions that my neighbors have lined out, and that planning is also added to this. Thank y'all.
You. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Councilman, would you like to come? Oh, before.
Three years. And what's happened in those three years? We changed the policy not once, but twice. Then we tried to change it again three times. Many of those times when the applicant deferred, it was at the request of neighbors. Maybe not the ones that showed up here today, but when we were working on those policy changes. So please don't charge that to the applicant. The applicant has been trying. One of the former board chairs of the Development Committee, Vita Rainey, retired because of the treatment that not the neighbors here, but some people were giving Miss Jessica. She couldn't take it anymore. Most of Nashville couldn't take it anymore. Every time she tried something. And she kept working. She kept writing down their changes. Now, one thing that we cannot do is decrease the density, because then the affordability is out the way. Neighbors go, hey, you're not going to do affordable, because you can do Airbnbs. All along, let's take it out. Get the council, we take it out. She's been constantly contacting folks about the Barnes Fund and other things, but unfortunately, the state government has tied our hands a lot to put certain requirements there. So with her partnering with nonprofits and pursuing those, and then taking the Airbnb option out, she is on the track to build probably the second affordable housing unit, the second largest affordable housing unit complex in my district. The first one was Oakwood. And thank you, Fabian Beddy, for your help there. And those units are renting at $900 a month for three-bedroom, two-bath. Yes, $900 a month, three-bedroom, two-bath, right there in East Nashville. But I digress. The point is, this fifth graduate, this person that has made District 5 her home, has sat for years, worked hard, didn't underpay for the property, worked with the homeowners, paid well over market value, and also kept working, put the alley in, and made those changes. Please support this. Now, with some of the other changes, do not decrease the density, because once you decrease that density, those units are going to skyrocket back up, because that's the only way with the cost of materials and labor. That's the only way. That is the only way that she can make this work. And even Noah has said, they understand, in order to get affordability, there must be density. You know how many units we had to put in there off of Oakwood to get those kind of... I call them '90s prices. We had to put over 300 units there, because the infrastructure, the topo, everything was messed up. And right now, I'm asking you to support my constituent, support her, give her her density that she needs. She's put in the alley, she's worked with neighbors. Before, we saw 10 people in opposition. Now we see three neighbors in opposition. And I love them, they're great people. I've been recommending one of them for a board. You know, that's how much I care about it, even if you disagree with me. That's fine. But the main thing right now that we're going to focus on is, we've got to keep that density, and she has worked tirelessly with the department, with the neighborhood. And all the time, you see the same folks complain, oh, we don't like this. Okay, Airbnbs are gone. We want an alley. Hey, your alley is there now. Hey, we want to change the policy again after three, after doing it twice, and costing the city all that money and bringing out, after all these wonderful planners did such an awesome job. And then, when we were looking at a Dickerson Road study, and I quote some of this, one of the same persons that came up here, it's like, why are we focusing on Dickerson Road with improvements? I'm like, it needs improvements. That's what we need. We should be working on other areas, you know, not in our district. And I've kind of found that when somebody doesn't want improvements in their own neighborhood, sidewalks, all kinds of things, and they fight everything, even when there's compromises. You want affordable housing, but you want one-acre lot. I mean, and that's saying, and like I said, this young lady has been through the wringer, and we need to support her. And she's met the conditions, and she's, the policy's been changed on her twice, and she's deferred to comply with the policy, she's deferred to get feedback, she's been meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting in the neighborhood. Support her, please. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Okay. Two minutes for rebuttal. Would the applicant like to come forth? For our recording, we need you to somehow...
Hi. Can I pull this up? Okay. There we go. Sorry. Okay. I brought that just so that you are able to be able to see what lies next door to me. There is 158 units that sits next door to my properties right there. There is a street that also is, there's two houses right there. So our single-family residence also sits next to a street, basically. And so we've worked with planning extensively to be able to finally say, okay, let's do a right-of-way, sorry, an alley dedication on the southern border of this community to allow transition to take place throughout the property. Width density does help to be able to create more housing options in this community. It has been an extremely long time. I feel like nothing is ever satisfied. Stacy Gorman, who I've worked very closely with, stated that he would support this project when he originally thought that planning approved an RM20 base zoning, with short-terminals included. When he found out that planning did not approve that, he switched the role and said, no, I don't support your project. You need to work with planning. You need to meet their conditions. When you can meet their conditions, then I will approve it. I meet the conditions. Still, disapproved from their opinions. And so I feel like I have gone to meeting after meeting after meeting to try to come to a consensus with this particular individual. And so I just ask that this is being able to be moved forward so that we can get these units out of the ground. None of these units are being built. You have a lot of SPs that are done, but nothing is coming out the ground. And it's time that we get inventory. It is extremely low inventory in this area. The prices are going outrageously high. From the moment I got to this property in 2016, actually 2015, because that's when I first... I first looked at it, the houses were $200,000. We're now at $389,000, period. And so I just think we need to get some inventory on the market, and I'm trying to create a smart growth development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and it's so hard to see all of you guys. You're so far away. Commissioner Tibbs, can I let you start?
How many units are actually now planned for it? Because I'll direct that to you.
The density is at an RM20.
There haven't been actually, in our SP, dedicated, how many?
Right. No, it would be the maximum permitted by RM20, which I think is 46, would be the maximum that's permitted. We looked to the adopted Highland Heights study as a guide, and in the R4 sub-district with the inclusion of infrastructure, which we now have, an RM20 is one of the appropriate densities within that sub-district of the Highland Heights study.
And the one that she showed that was next to it, what was the, was that an SP as well? Okay.
Yes, this was an SP that was approved a couple of years ago for 158 units.
Okay. Was it just like 158, or was it also a max up of RM20, or was it just 158?
It's 158, and then the fallback zoning is RM20. And so if, in regards to setbacks or anything else that the SP didn't address, it would address it in the RM20 bulk standards, but the max amount of units is still 158.
Well, it does seem like there's been a lot of work with staff on this project, and a lot of still conditions that, but to move forward with it. So right now, I'm pretty, you know, I feel favorable of moving forward with it based off of the work you guys have put into it, I mean, notwithstanding the work you guys, you've put into it. But I'll, I'll continue to listen to the rest of my commissioners.
Ushner Blackshear?
There is talk about transition between the various zonings, and can you, I can't really, it's hard without this, talk to us about what are the surrounding zonings and what kind of analysis that you undertook when thinking about transition?
So there are a variety of zoning districts in the area. The immediately to the north, of course, is the SP. And when we talk about transitions, it's not just density. It might be setbacks, height, those sorts of things as well that are considered as part of a transition, if you will. So the SP to the north, which approved the 158 units immediately to the north, the building that's approved on the front, they're fronting on Lishi, is permitted to be 50 feet in height, three stories and 50 feet. Across the street from this is RS5, which that permits right now, three stories. What we've done with this is we included a standard wherein this project would have setbacks similar to what were approved in the SP to the north, which would be 20-foot minimum, 40-foot maximum on the front. And so that's providing a bit of a transition from Lishi. We also included a standard wherein they would have a maximum of 30 feet in height at Lishi, and then have to step back. And so it's actually a lesser height than what's approved in that multifamily building in the SP to the north.
That's really helpful, because obviously I can understand the rationale of transitions. But if, if we can successfully transition within this SP and it not necessarily affect the density, then I think the density question becomes harder, but easier to maintain the maximum affordability, I think, running of planning policies. I did have a question about affordable housing. I don't really know what is and is not appropriate to ask, but there was a lot of mention about affordable housing. Have you thought about the prices of the units? I mean, it looks like there's not, I mean, we're, we're talking about basically RM20, and you don't have a set, I don't think you have a set number of units yet, but have you thought about prices for the units?
Yes.
Navigate your way back to the podium.
Okay, so with density allows there to be more affordable units that take place on the marketplace, because it reduces the size of those units. So our condo units, we were looking for around $200,000 for a one-bedroom, and then a two-bedroom, maybe 220, 230. And then the townhouses to be around in the low 300s, whereas right now, they're at $415,000 on Lishi Avenue. So that was sort of our ideal for pricing. Every day, it's consistently changing as we're monitoring the marketplace.
Thank you. I think that's all I have. I am interested in hearing what the other commissioners have to say.
I just wanted to jump in just briefly. I think certainly discuss density, but just for the purposes of record, specific conversations about pricing or pricing points, it's not something that the commission can consider when heading towards.
Councilman Bednay?
That's me.
That is you. Can you hit your butt?
So when we had the public hearing and the council, we had a lot of people that came and spoke on support of this project because of their perception that this will add affordable housing. Obviously, I'm not saying that we should place an affordable housing condition or anything. I'm just like the law. So I was wondering if we were going to hear any comments about a community benefit agreement between the developer and some local neighborhood group? And that hasn't come up. So I, I feel that in an effort to address and ensure that the, what the community asks of the developer, that will need to be something that the developer might want to consider in, in moving forward. So I am going to abstain on this, because although I admire and appreciate the effort of the developer to address the wants of the people in the district that are, is seeing a fleeting housing capacity, I also think that the threshold should be higher to, to accept a change of this type, even though it's recommended by the community plan. So I'm, I feel that I'm not there yet, so I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Councilman. For more?
I also had questions about the transition, but I appreciate those answers. That was helpful. Also, I had questions about the buffer, and I was wondering if one was ever considered to the south of the property.
So with public infrastructure, a public alley, we put it along a property line because that provides for the greater connectivity goals that are part of the plan. It was shown along the property line with the plan that you, that was adopted, the Highland Heights Plan in the mobility study. If you place a buffer between an alley and a property line, then it can't be utilized by the properties to the south. Then it doesn't function as a public alley. And so we build alleys along a property line so that if the properties to the south were to be redeveloped, it could be utilized. The one that was mentioned to the north is not a public alley. It's a private drive.
That's, I think, in general, favorable. Listening.
I, the alley, the request for a 26-foot alley versus a 20-foot alley, we got thoughts on that from the staff?
20 feet is the metro standard alley right-of-way.
Based on what I've heard, I'm, I'm leaning to support the staff's recommendation.
Are there any, question for staff, are there any setback stipulations for the SP to the north as it relates to these particular properties?
Between this and that property? There were front setbacks that were established to build two zone, and then there's actually a private drive. And Letitia can pull that plan back up so that you can see it.
Yes, I'm, I'm really more interested in the side setback.
So there was a private drive separating these properties from that property to the north there, you can see.
And there's not a required setback between RM, RM5 and RM20, or RS5 and RM20, correct?
Setback or buffer?
Buffer, sorry.
That's why we called for the buffer. If you'll, we have included a standard that there be a buffer along the western property line, because that would be an RM20 this adjacent to an RS5. But not along the southern property line, because that's where the alley would be. And if we put a buffer in between it, then you can't utilize the alley for the connectivity goals.
Is that typically required of standard between the RS5 and the RM20? That's standard protocol?
Yeah, it's a A buffer. Is that correct, Letitia? Yes.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question, I guess, following up on the, the letter provided, and just reviewing the setbacks again? So we understand the setbacks off of Lishi? I know you just did this, but.
Sure. The setbacks for the SP to the north, it shows some building locations, but that it includes a standard that's essentially like five to, five to 80 or something like that. And so what we've done is we've looked at this, and we've said, establish a build-to, minimum of 20, maximum of 40, and no parking between the buildings and Lishi. And so then it will provide for the transition between the one to the north and this one. So minimum 12, minimum of 20, maximum of 40.
But as you're going down Lishi, there will be some consistency?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was all for my questions. Commissioner Elon.
I'll make a motion that we approve 180.
Hold on one sec. We had one more question.
So one other question for staff, and that is related to alleys, establishing new alleys up against property lines that, that really aren't designed to have alleys, like the properties to the south. Is there any precedent there? Is that, did I make that clear?
So what I would say is that this is an evolving policy, and this is a small-area plan that indicated by the community that the need for infrastructure, including alleys, was imperative to the development of this neighborhood. And so it is one of the backbones of what the Highland Heights Study called for, was this establishment of a new alley network. And so the best place for them to go is along property lines, because then you're not disrupting lot patterns.
What is the RS5 rear setback?
20.
So that would be non-conforming, those, those houses on Edith?
Yeah, I think that they are currently non-conforming, correct.
Right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? And if not, we'll allow Commissioner Tibbs to start over on his, on his motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve 1804 and 18, 1806 Lishi Avenue with all staff recommendations.
Proper motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and second, any discussion?
Just recording, yes, abstention.
We've got one abstention, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
But I can't see you all at once. Down here, are we all three? All right, in that way, we had two. So we've got motion carries, five in favor, one abstention. Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is item five. to mixed-use limited alternative zoning for properties located on Cherokee Avenue, located approximately 1,000 feet east of Jones Avenue. For context, here is Jones Avenue, Ellington Parkway is over here, and we are south of Edwin Street up here, which wraps and connects to East Trinity. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The site includes six parcels on approximately 2.66 acres on the south side of Cherokee Avenue. The site is located mid-block between Jones and Ellington Parkway, and includes vacant and single-family residential properties. Cherokee Avenue includes a mixture of industrial, commercial, vacant, and some residential properties as well. The site is zoned RM20A. Several properties along this block, including the subject site, were rezoned from IWD, or were rezoned to RM20A, and over the past couple of years, this site includes various parcels that were rezoned from IWD to RM20A between 2017 and 2018. The site is outlined in red and is located within the T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy, and is also located within the Highland Heights supplemental policy area. As Letitia just mentioned, the Highland Heights Study was adopted last summer after an extensive community engagement process, and it resulted in changes and updates to the community character policies of this area. The policy for the majority of properties along Cherokee Avenue changed from a T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood policy to a T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy with the adoption of the Highland Heights Plan. And this reflected the community's desire for Cherokee Avenue to evolve into a residential street with a residential development pattern that discourages new non-residential uses. The site is within the R5 sub-district of the building regulating plan, which is shown in this orange color on the screen. And the R5 sub-district is intended to create and enhance residential neighborhoods with greater housing diversity, improved connectivity, and improved infrastructure. Specific to Cherokee Avenue, the goal of the R5 sub-district is to establish a framework of public infrastructure that could serve the increased capacity of residential units in this area over time. The R5 sub-district supports only residential building types, ranging from duplexes and daddies to mid-rise flats. This pattern of development is consistent with the goals of the general T4 neighborhood evolving policy. It may be hard to read, but the last row here, in the pink and purple colors, indicates mixed-use developments or mixed-use building types. And you'll notice that the only rows with mixed use are in the M1, M2, and M3 sub-districts. And again, this site is not located within any of the mixed-use sub-districts. Rezoning to MULA would allow for non-residential uses, which is inconsistent with the goals of the Highland Heights supplemental policy and with the general T4 neighborhood evolving policy, which reflects the community's desire for Cherokee Avenue to evolve from its current mixture of non-residential and industrial uses into a residential street with residential uses. While MULA would allow for residential uses, new non-residential uses would also be allowed within MULA, which is inconsistent with the base policy and with the supplemental policy, and is also in direct conflict with the community's vision for Cherokee Avenue, and therefore staff recommendation is to disapprove. Thank you. Open the public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. I represent Cherokee Development Partners. If we could go to the next slide, Ms. Rikoff, the next aerial on the street, you can see what a challenge it has been to develop this property. In fact, the first developer of this RM twenty property went belly up, was unable to make it economically feasible. My clients are the second developer to attempt this. This property is surrounded on three sides by industrial zoning and industrial uses, as you can see in this property. The reason this MULA is so important is because it'll make this project feasible in that it'll provide live-work opportunity. First floor is being devoted to potential office uses by people who are buying not only a residence, but buying a place in which they can conduct their law consultation, or insurance consultation, or whatever trade they may have, they could have that on the first floor. So the live-work opportunity is critical to make this work, and also the opportunity for workforce housing that my client's interested in doing. So with that, we ask for your support. I would like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. As Sean mentioned, the purpose of this rezoning is to allow live-work units for this property, and in the bulk regulations, the main difference between RM twenty and MULA is the height difference. MULA would allow the first floor, which is where the office and retail uses, would allow for the taller floor area, taller ceilings for the commercial uses. One concern that was raised in the Highland Heights study was the rising cost of housing is displacing lower-income residents within the study area and throughout Nashville, and this was identified as a concern during the study. This proposal would allow, as Sean mentioned, some workforce housing. The staff report suggests that there would be fifty-eight residential units and 57,935 square feet of retail and office, or retail and office. We've prepared a study, and with the floor area ratio in MULA of 1.0, and the buildings being three stories, which would be typical, four stories would provide even less floor area on the first level, that would only allow 38,623 square feet of a commercial use, which is about half of what's in the staff report, what would be possible in the staff report.
My name's Tony Harris, and I'm one of the owners of eight eighteen Cherokee, as well as the proposed builder for the project, and I've done a lot of projects in Nashville. I understand affordable housing, workforce housing, I'm doing multiple projects in different locations. One of note might be 12th and Paris that's on Nashville Next. If you look at the example of projects to build in Nashville, that's a project that I was involved in and built. And that's part of the reason why we're asking for this rezone, because we do need some flexibility, because like 12th and Paris, to make it successful, we need the flexibility of allowing people to adjust their use a little bit there. If they need the first floor for their office, we need to be able to say, okay, we can change the door, we can change the window, we can change height a little bit to allow it more commercial use or feel, and it's important to be successful, because 12th and Paris is at least ten years old, and we want a new project to show the next time, so this could be the project that we could show. But also, there's a few other things, so workforce housing we can do if we get added density, which we've talked about, there's an unsuccessful attempt already, so I intend to make this one successful and make everybody proud of this project. Eight twenty-eight, as you can see up here, the reason why that one became available, there's a paving company across the road, and one of the trucks came across the road and actually hit the house and killed the person that lived there before, so while this is an evolving area, and we want to change it and make things better, it's not there yet, so it's not an area that we can have our kid, you know, riding around on Cherokee Avenue yet, so we want to be part of the process to help make that change, so that's why we're asking here, and thank you for your time.
Evening. My name's Brian Merrill, local real estate agent here in Nashville, working with a developer to determine highest and best use for this property. As I started researching the area, it became apparent, as we talked, as you heard earlier, it's surrounded by light industrial and warehousing, that's not always conducive to a residential neighborhood or development. And, but it's also clear that it is an evolving area, that it does have a lot of potential. And after doing some research, I talked to some other real estate agents, architects, appraisers in the area, and they all agreed that a workforce and an area we can do mixed use, like a live-work type development, would be appropriate for that particular area. And we feel like with MULA, we can get that extra height, so we can put that on the bottom floor, so a young professional artisan that wants to also take advantage of the real estate market can also have their business on the bottom floor, and with that MULA will give us that flexibility to do so. Thank you.
Okay, we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Is there anybody here speaking in support? Anybody speaking in opposition? All right, well, the public hearing closed, would you like your two minutes for rebuttal? Okay. Commissioners, I'm going to start this direction. Commissioner Elon, would you like to go first? Oh, sorry, councilman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you for being here. I want to thank the planning staff for their hard work in the Highland Heights redevelopment plan. They did a tremendous job, and they got a lot of impact, and I just want to thank you. You know, I can't afford to give you that thirty to fifty percent raise you deserve, but believe me, you deserve it, and if I was a billionaire, I'll give it to you, but I can't. This is complicated, because there's a lot of crazy industrial businesses on this strip, and I appreciate the developer speaking to one of my neighbors that live on the corner, and one of the things that we're going to point out a slight difference, if I'm wrong, staff, please, please correct me, because you're the experts. And one thing I want to look at here is that if this were to go from the RM zoning that is now to MULA, it would be just providing, is it five extra units possibly, Lisa, or Bob? Or maybe four?
So for MU districts, the floor, any residential that's on upper floors is actually not counted against the floor area, and so you would be limited only by height, and so MU districts are a little bit different in that the floor area would be only for those non-residential uses, and then any residential would just be a function of the height and the bulk standards. But it's not necessarily us looking at the increases in residential, it's the uses that are also permitted.
Yeah, and just as a procedural question, too. The commission has the power to, you know, maybe it's written or verbal, you know, they can say, hey, we support this, but can we add this or take certain things away? Is that correct?
Not for straight zone changes, you couldn't exclude certain uses if it's a straight zone change.
Even if the commissioners, okay, that's okay, that's okay. No problem. Okay. One thing I want to point out, though, is, you guys see my Highland Heights neighbors all the time. They're wonderful people, you know, we have differences in opinion sometimes, but we love each other, we knew each other. In fact, I'll be helping some of them cut a tree this weekend where we have our neighborhood meetings at, and one thing I want to point out, too, is, this is in their area, and, you know, I mean, the opposition, because we all agree and have no issues with this change. I would like some live-work space there for the neighbors and for people moving in. At the end of the street, there was an approved development, which was RM, and it has fifteen units there, which all were sold, these are three-bed and two-baths at the very end of Cherokee, that were sold for $230,000. Yes, and they were completed last year, they all sold out pretty quickly, because with it being industrial along that street, yes, it's more congested with a lot of other things, but at the same time provides the opportunity for a lower-cost unit. I know we can't consider that in our decisions, but, you know, a lot of us, you know, want regular people and our service providers be able to have good, strong, affordable housing, and I'm asking you to approve it, if you can approve it, you know how I feel, we're still friends, still love you, and thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you, councilman. Okay, now, we'll go to Commissioner Elon.
A question for staff, what, how would the parking requirements change between the RM twenty and the MUL?
Well, if multi-family were to be developed under RM twenty, it would be based on the unit count. Parking location for either, because either both ones are A districts, so you would still be limited to one module of parking in the front, regardless if it was RM twenty A or MULA, but as far as parking counts, it would depend on the unit count. That's how the parking code, that's how the parking calculations are figured out. So if MULA included residential plus other non-residential, then those non-residential uses would have to be parked as well.
Got it, okay. I think this seems like a great project. I have concerns about the location within the block, and probably similar concerns that staff did, but I'll, Commissioner speak.
Mr. Gobble?
Yeah, I think, I understand the concept, and I understand where they're going with this, and it makes sense, but can we go back and talk about the policy again? Because the policy, violating the policy is a concern.
Sure, so when the Highland Heights, this is part of the Highland Heights study area, when the Highland Heights study was adopted, the policy along this street was actually changed from mixed use to neighborhood evolving, which is a residential policy, and that's the policy that is in place now, is neighborhood evolving, which would not support an MULA mixed-use zoning district.
So that's really the reason you disapprove, recommend disapproval, is just that it violates the policy and...
Yes, the commission should rely on the policy in its deliberation about its own.
I mean, like I said, I understand the concept, I'm not sure, I mean, it sounds like kind of the right thing to do, but I don't think we can violate the policy, so that's where I am.
Commissioner Moore?
I agree with that, and I guess, I know that we, what had me struggling just a bit is looking at all the industrial up and down the street, but now that this is all in the R5 district, if those were sold and something was rebuilt on those, those would all have to be residential as well, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Bednay? Are you still down there?
I'm trying to hide from you. I'm, you know, I'm a big fan of building affordability in the city, but I just don't, I can't, for the life of me, I can't accept that low-income people need to live in the middle of an industrial place. That tends to be the place where people tend to, issue of the impact of environmental issues impacting our lower-income families. It's very, it's something I just can't stand, it's even worse for me than the lack of affordability, so I have a hard time with that, so I'm just going to support the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Blackshear?
I don't really have anything new to add, other than just to emphasize the role of policy in guiding our decisions. We, as a commission, cannot approve something that's inconsistent with policy. If we wanted to do that, we would have to make a decision or determination as to why it's consistent with policy, and here, it's clear, I mean, the policy allows for residential uses, and this rezone would allow non-residential uses, so that really kind of ties our hands as far as our determination of whether this should be approved or disapproved.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I don't have anything new to add, just, you know, I could see why originally was the MUL, but I definitely wouldn't want to change the base policy, because there was a lot went into that, so I'd like to make a motion that we follow staff recommendation and go for disapproval.
Proper motion, do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to item twelve.
Item twelve is a request for concept plan approval for properties located in the Madison area, it's for 121 cluster lots. This request was deferred from the June 27 planning commission meeting. At that meeting, it was concerned that there was not a public or a community meeting held, so the commission asked that the applicant hold a community meeting, which they did on Monday of this week. That public hearing was closed. This is the site, it's approximately 33 acres. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. The existing zoning is single-family residential, prepared up to 122 single-family lots under the cluster lot option, as well as under the traditional subdivision, 143 single-family lots. This is a cluster lot option, which provides flexibility of design, creation of a common open space, and the preservation of natural features, permits the reduction of lot sizes, and requires a minimum of 15% open space. This is the proposed subdivision, again, it's for 121 single-family lots with a density of approximately 3.6 dwelling units per acre. Lots range in size from 5,000 square feet to 14,000 square feet. Access is from Neely's Bend Road, Apache Lane, and Canton Pass. Sidewalks provided along all new streets, consistent with the local street standard, as well as on Neely's Bend, consistent with the Major and Collector Street Plan. Plan provides approximately 11 acres of open space, which is approximately 33% of the site. These include recreational areas as well as buffer yards. As proposed, the plan is consistent with zoning code requirements and the subdivision requirements. At the last meeting, there was lots of questions about an SP that was proposed in 2017. This is the plan, which called for 195 residential units and included also commercial uses. There was a policy request associated with this. This plan was deferred indefinitely, and the sentiment at the time was that the policy was correct, and that the property should develop under the existing zoning. Inclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions, as request is consistent with the subdivision regulations and the zoning requirements.
So commissioners, as he, as was noted, that we've closed the public hearing back in June, but I would like to ask if the council member would like to say anything? Do you have any, like to speak on this item?
I was, it doesn't go before council, so I was basically going to be present to respond to any questions concerning the public, the community meeting we had Monday. So if there's any questions to that regard, I'd be more than happy to respond, but other than that, I'll-
While you're here, how did it go?
It went well, there was very, it was, I think there was over 100 people there, so, and naturally, the concerns were, as in most instances, infrastructure. So, and naturally, um, the concerns were, as in most instances, infrastructure and stormwater issues.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions, either for the councilmen or for staff regarding this item?
I have a question. I know some, I know some of the comments that we received from the neighbors. I hope most of the neighbors enjoy the meeting and found it helpful, but some of the comments we received was just the lack of staff attendance. And I know that it's hard for staff to attend every meeting, especially when the meeting was probably planned without taking into consideration your availability. I just have a question. How does that normally work? I mean, I know you attend innumerable meetings throughout the year and are very, very dedicated to making sure that the neighborhoods are involved. So I don't want to leave the impression that staff did not care about this issue and they didn't take it as a priority.
Sure. Typically, the way that we sort of handle, um, community meetings of various types, there are certain community meetings that are staff-led. Those are associated generally with community plan amendments. Um, those are required in your rules and procedures. We are invited to a lot of community meetings, um, having to do with both specific projects, as well as with general planning concerns. Um, we make every effort to attend all of those meetings when we can. There are some meetings that are developer-led meetings, which was the, the meeting in this case. And so we do make every effort, but we are somewhat short-staffed and attend a lot of night meetings. And so it's not, it's just sometimes not possible for us to attend all of them.
I believe there was a at night, short-term rentals that the land development team was attending that had already been pre-scheduled, so.
Any other questions? If not, um, we need a motion to move this item forward. Does anybody?
Take a motion that we support staff's recommendation and approve as presented.
Proper motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Next item is item nineteen.
The next case on this evening's agenda is item nineteen. This is a request for concept plan approval to permit the construction of a portion of a public road. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Site contains one point eight, eight, point zero eight acres and is located at Old Franklin Road and Kane Ridge Road, approximately seven hundred and ninety feet east of Kane Ridge Parkway. The site is vacant and consists of dense vegetation. The surrounding land use pattern contains a diverse mixture of structure types and land uses. The Century Farms development is located across Old Franklin Road to the north of this site. A majority of the surrounding area is zone RS ten and contains single-family dwellings. Site is currently zoned AR two A, R twenty, and P U D. AR two A requires a minimum two-acre lot size and intended, and is intended for uses that generally occur in rural areas. R twenty requires a minimum twenty thousand square foot lot and is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes. And the planned unit development overlay zoning is an alternative zoning process that allows for development of land in a well-planned and coordinated manner. Policy for the site is T three, suburban neighborhood evolving and T three suburban community center. In order to achieve harmonious development, the planning commission has adopted subdivision regulations that include standards for specific transects. For these policies, the conventional regulations found in chapter three are utilized. The image before you shows the site plan for the proposed street. The site plan proposes a portion of a new public street and improvements to Old Franklin Road. The intent of this plan is to shift the location of the street further away from the bridge, which crosses Interstate twenty-four in the top right portion of the screen. This relocation is done to improve site distance for this street connection. The new public street will provide a connection to the previously approved multifamily residential P U D, which is located to the southeast of this intersection. A portion of the street is located within T dot right-of-way, and approval from T dot will be required with the submission of the final site plan, as noted on the plan set. The portion of the new public street will contain a total of fifty-nine feet of right-of-way. While the entire section of the right-of-way is being dedicated with this plan, the full three-lane section won't be constructed until the multifamily P U D to the southeast is developed, as required by the approved traffic impact study for the P U D. The proposed street will include a six-foot wide sidewalk and four-foot wide planting strip along the western portion of the street. The sidewalk width exceeds the local street standard. A six-foot wide sidewalk and six-foot wide planting strip will be required along the frontage of parcel zero three eight, which is shown in the left-hand portion of the screen, just at the left of the proposed street. This sidewalk and grass strip is consistent with the requirements of the major and collector's street plan. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve as a proposed street meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations and is consistent with the approved plan for the multifamily P U D to the southeast.
Thank you. Applicant here? Now you'll have ten minutes. Reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. Hi, my name's Adam Sager. I'm with Dale and Associates, five sixteen Heather Place. We are the civil engineers representing the owner developer of this project. Appreciate everybody's service here tonight, even when we have to travel over here. The matter before you tonight is not about the PUD. This is part of the PUD. It's related to the PUD, but this isn't the PUD that's before you. What's, what's going on is that the client is making a very sizable investment in property. And they want to make sure that everything is going to work out and, you know, make sure that, um, what they're proposing can be built. And because of the location of this access, uh, it's, it's pretty close to Interstate twenty-four. It's pretty close to the bridge. It, when we did a detailed survey, an analysis of this road at the access point, we're, we, we started to see that, you know, it probably would be better to get all of the turn lanes and everything that, that we want, not just us, but what Metro Public Works wants. Sidewalks, turn lanes, striping, everything, the tapers. It's going to fit a lot better and be a much safer configuration if we could pull that access point and just bend it out a little bit and get it away from the T dot bridge. That way, we don't have to mess with the bridge at all. We're not getting in any really tight situations. And so it was very important for the client to make sure that all of this could happen. Furthermore, a lot of what you're seeing up here is across T dot right-of-way. It's kind of interesting. The T dot right-of-way kind of makes a notch out there and it goes across there. We have met with them a couple times. We've gotten their approval on the layout. We have that in writing. We've been working with them along with this as well, and they also support this bend in the road. So our client has agreed with the neighbors, uh, here that it crosses over to relocate the driveway that's here. And that's why we're here before you tonight as a concept plan, just to solidify and certify that this location's where it's going to go. This is the safest position to be in. This is going to make the turn lanes and site distances better. Better tapers, better sidewalks, all of the above. We do cross the neighbor's driveway. The original plan crossed the neighbor's driveway. This plan crosses his driveway. Both cross the driveway. And so, uh, Mr. Taylor is here tonight. He owns a property. He accesses. That's his driveway. We have contacted him, uh, and will continue happily to work with him. We have to replace his access, provide a new driveway ramp. We will certainly do so. Any utility services, such as his water service that goes to his property, uh, we have to replace that as well, provide him a new meter. So all of that stuff, uh, will be worked out. But again, tonight is not the, the, the time to work with all the little minor engineering details, water services. Tonight is to establish the location of the intersection so that we have a good, safe location for both T dot, for Metro, for everybody involved. And so really appreciate your consideration on this matter. I'm going to reserve, uh, two minutes for rebuttal, but also no Mr. White representing would also like to speak. Thank you.
Hey, we're good to go. Thank you. Uh, Chairman, Chair Lady, Members of the Commission, Tom White, three fifteen Dedrick Street. I represent the applicant along with Adam Sager. My comments are very simple. It is a concept plan approval. I don't think there's any dispute legally that when you set plan approval subdivision. Am I good to go?
You're good.
I'm, I'm too far away.
Yes.
I should, I should roll it up like the prior applicant, but I can't speak and roll at the same time. Anyway, my comment is that I represent the applicant. It's a concept plan approval. Legally, if you meet the conditions of the subdivision, and there's no dispute about that, it should be approved. Secondly, I would like to make the commitment that we respect. Mr. Taylor's here today. We'll make a commitment to have an additional neighborhood meeting on this matter, period. With respect to, uh, any other issues today, as we've explained to the staff and, and everyone we've talked to, we're under a contract commitment where we can't defer this matter. We respectfully ask for it to be approved this evening. We understand it's subject to the final T dot approval. Thus far, conceptually, they've been fine with it. It is subject to their final approval, but we respectfully ask that as a simple concept plan approval, we meet the conditions. It should be approved. We'll commit to the neighborhood meeting. Would respectfully ask it to be approved this evening. Thank you for your courtesies and tolerating the non-ambulatory mic program.
Thank you. Okay. Um, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Uh, do we have anyone here speaking in support of this item? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forth. You'll have two minutes and start with your name and address.
John Taylor. I live at thirty-one hundred Old Franklin Road, this property. May I pass these out? I've been to the last meeting and I have the same issues I had the last meeting. And they haven't been addressed, and, and I'd like these addressed before we move forward this. Once this is done, I have no other recourse. They've assured me they're going to take care of my problems, but other than my house being on their property and them taking my right-of-way and my water line, really, we don't have any other problems, but my house is shown on their property and they're taking my water line and my right-of-way. So there should be some discussion about this and these things settle, I feel, before, um, we go on. Here's the notice sent out to the residents, and it's a concept plan for construction at Old Franklin and Kane Ridge Road, which is not the correct place. This is not what we're talking about. So if they were sent to the neighbors, they got the same one I did. It's just not correct. There are three other developments at Kane Ridge and Old Franklin, but this is not the one. So tonight I represent the nonprofit that lives at this property, that little old cabin, the cabin of Grace Cole, a historic figure in my community. And I probably am not going to stop this, although I want two weeks or so to talk about this and try to settle and also to let the neighbors know, because they don't know. But if I can't get that, um, I, I won't be totally disappointed because I see how this, this works. But when I went to T dot and T V A, they could find no letter where they said that everything was okay. I investigated for several weeks. So I'm not sure, does T dot release a letter to you folks at planning? Do you have a letter from T dot saying it's okay to do this? Because they told me they, they did not have that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, we'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Uh, to address the four items that I wrote down, Mr. Taylor had. We have worked with Mr. Taylor in the past. I've met with him, uh, spoke with him before this meeting. The water line issue, again, the water line does access Old Franklin Road. We have to build a new water main, provide new meter water service. It is not a taking. We aren't taking anything. Both his water line, his driveway is also on the T dot property, on other people's property that, uh, we have a right to cross, and therefore we're replacing what's there. We're, we're making it better. So we aren't taking anything off of his property, nor are we crossing his property at any point. The notices, uh, I don't know why it, it would say that, except the notices were sent out. The notices were, uh, we have other people who did receive the notices. There are about three or four projects going on really close to here. So maybe it was one of those. The T dot process, like I said, we have met with T dot at least twice, maybe even three times. I do have a letter from T dot, uh, that states their agreement with this layout in concept. And how this works is that we have to do the final construction drawings next. That will go to Metro Public Works, Metro Water Services, Metro Stormwater. We get all of those items approved on that set of drawings. We take that set of drawings, and then we take it to T dot, and T dot blesses that as well at the end. So they've provided their, excuse me, sorry, preliminary approval, and then they will provide their final approval once construction drawings are completed. And I think that's, that's all I've got. So again, thank you for your time.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Gobble, I'm going to start with you.
I'm a bit confused. Can staff kind of show us who owns what?
So I illustrated this drawing here, and so if you'll follow with me and bear with me here, I believe I can illustrate where the property lines are relative to Mr. Taylor's property, um, where the current driveway is and where the road was previously approved for the multifamily P U D. So the large gray rectangle you see here, that is the location of the previously approved public street associated with the multifamily P U D, which is located just off the screen to, in the lower right-hand portion. The orange line you see following the mouse here is the property line associated with the approved multifamily P U D. Everything to the right of my mouse now would be that property where that P U D is located. The gray driveway where the mouse is following now is Mr. Taylor's property. And so access is granted by a recorded deed that allows him to access, um, through this property and T, and T dot right-of-way to access Old Franklin Road. So his property is located with inside these orange lines that you see on the screen. There is a property here to the left that is now in a slightly different configuration because this is the approved P U D plan. So there has been a parcel that's been created along Old Franklin Road, um, roughly where my mouse is following now. So the reconfigured road, and I will back up so you can see the difference in what's being proposed. The reconfigured road traverses from the multifamily P U D where my mouse is located across T dot right-of-way here, and then across another parcel that's been since configured since the P U D plan was approved. Mr. Taylor's access would be located here via a new driveway apron, apron to the proposed road.
Let me just clarify one thing. There's a large area of right-of-way, um, where the current driveway goes through before you get to the property line, um, either of the property lines. So there's a large area of right-of-way, um, adjacent to Old Franklin.
It's complicated. I, I'm inclined to support staff's position. Uh, I do think they have to, need to work to make sure that the gentleman who spoke has made, you know, has facilitated, but I don't, I know getting through T dot is no easy thing, so I'm confident that they'll be in compliance.
So just to follow up, so, um, the private property owner's driveway is encroaching on the right-of-way?
It's within.
It's within the right-of-way.
Up until a point. So, if you see this large area within here, all of this is right-of-way. Okay? This is the property line here, Mr. Taylor's property line where it begins. So, all of this up here is right-of-way.
It will be encroaching less on the right-of-way. So, the little strange-shaped parcel, I can't read what that number is. Who is, who owns that?
That the gray road is now going across?
Yes.
This, the property owner of the PUD has purchased that property to be able to make this shifting of the right-of-way possible.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That makes much more sense. I'm inclined to support staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Tibbs.
No further comment.
Commissioner Blackshear.
Comment.
Commissioner Bednay. Councilman Bednay.
And do I have comments? So, Century Farms has been doing all kinds of roadwork. That's right next to my district. And the people that travel from and to my district have to drive through there, and they call me all the time, because Century Farms closes the streets without notice, and people have to make new plans to move around the area. So, my main complaint is this is, again, going to disturb travel patterns, and this is the first time I hear about this. I mean, I saw it on the agenda, but I had told the Century Farms people to call me when they were going to do something like this, so we could let people know, and they haven't done that. So, I would like them to have a community meeting ahead of me agreeing to approve it. If they are not going to defer a meeting today, then I'll just vote against it, because it is creating a big disruption in that part of the city. People, our roads are over capacity. People are having a hard time navigating around the city, and they, people should be told when there's going to be something that impacts the traffic flow.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Moore.
That's my only question. So, this is a concept, where does our role lie when we're looking at this? Is this...
Well, a concept plan is essentially a subdivision of land. If you find that it meets the subdivision regulations, it should be approved. The staff has made the determination that based upon what's been submitted to them, they feel it meets those subdivision regulations. Certainly, the commission will make that final determination. However, should you disagree with staff's recommendation, you should cite what part of the plan as submitted doesn't meet those regulations.
The only thing, other thing I would add is, there was a health-safety issue identified with site distance, and this is an attempt to correct that. So...
I guess to the councilman's question about timing for a community meeting, is are we on a time restrict...
It's my understanding that there is a timing issue associated with the project and working with both of the property owners. It sounds like the applicant has agreed to a follow-up meeting. Given that this meets the subregs, and there's not a requirement for a community meeting, my recommendation would be to approve it today. If you think this, this microphone is making me mad. If you think, if you determine that it meets the subregs, and that's what staff is recommending, I would recommend that you go ahead and approve it, and with the condition that the applicant hold a neighborhood meeting, as opposed to the reverse.
Just as a reminder to the commission, the PUD revision with the other access was approved recently, so if this concept plan were not to be approved, they would still have the option of going with the already-approved access point that is less ideal from a safety standpoint. So, that ultimately, they could still move forward with the other access that has been deemed to be not quite as ideal as this one from a traffic standpoint.
Ask one more sort of clarifying question from, we're very used to concept plans with development patterns, but not necessarily with street placement. Can you just remind us what the subdivision regulations are with street placement? Well, the requirements of subdivision for a new public street.
Sure. So, I mean, they would be reviewed against the subdivision regulations, which establishes the technical standards for what requirements there are for widths and where roads should be located in regards to safety issues. And so, Public Works has approved this as well under concept.
So, Commissioners, I had it. Commissioners, any other questions, other than can I use my microphone? Do I have a motion of some sort? We need a motion.
I move approval with staff's recommendation.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
I would like to see a... I would like to see a community meeting, and it is part of a condition.
So, we have a motion with a condition. Any other discussion? Can I have a vote, all in favor of approving the subdivision?
With the condition.
With the condition of a public meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? One. Okay. Motion carries. Commissioners, I don't think we have a need for a, or we're not going to take a long break, but if anyone needs a five-minute break, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. We have two items to go. We can definitely keep going, but just wanted to give people the opportunity if you need a five-minute break. You want to get done? Okay. Anyone else need a moment? All right. We'll keep going.
Item 22 is a request to rezone from one- and two-family residential to multifamily residential. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The site is located at the corner of Cliff Drive where the L-shaped street bends, creating two sides of the property having frontage along Cliff Drive. The site has been developed with two detached single-family structures. The surrounding properties are zoned R8 and have primarily been developed with the families, with one- and two-family structures. RM15A, the requested zoning, would provide for a maximum of six units. The site is within the T4 urban neighborhood evolving policy, as well as the Haynes Trinity Small Area Plan. Both of these plans call for urban-style development while still providing additional housing opportunities. The proposed RM15A zoning district is consistent with the T4 NE policy at this location. The policy indicates that when evaluating more intense zoning districts, the characteristics of the site, proximity to corridors, and surrounding development shall be considered. The property has street frontage along both sides, making it more appropriate for increased intensity. The site is also located in proximity to Buena Vista Pike and Clarksville Pike, two corridors. Across Cliff Drive is the Kelly Miller Smith Towers, a 10-story multifamily building. While the area is primarily one- and two-family detached structures, the proposed zoning district provides the opportunity to establish diversity of housing at a neighborhood scale. The alternative zoning district includes enhanced design standards consistent with the urban form identified by the policy. Given the consistency with the policy and opportunity, housing at a level appropriate to the surrounding neighborhood, staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing as the applicant. You will have 10 minutes, and please start with your name and address.
Good evening. Robert Hudson. My address is 2721 Cliff Drive. I'm a Nashville native, developer. Last five years, I've been developing in the Buchanan Art District area. I've done over 20, 22 homes in that area over there. Today, I'm just here to just basically state what I would like to do. Excuse me. Three bedrooms, three baths, three-story homes, brick fronts, Hardy Boy siding, possibly some garages. I really don't have a whole lot to say. It was upon approval. I thought it was going to be a cakewalk when I walked in here first, but I guess I have some people opposing. I've been to several of the neighborhood meetings in the area. The vision for that West Trinity Lane area is amazing, and I just really would like to be a part of the vision and the growth in the area. So, other than that, I just, we don't have too much to say.
Thank you. Well, we'll let you reserve two minutes for rebuttal. We've got anyone speaking in support? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? Please come forth, and you'll have two minutes, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Forte. I live at 2122 Cliff Drive. The residents of Cliff Drive are here to have a voice in our neighborhood. We represent residents who live next door, across the street, within yards, 21, 27, 21, 29, with over 30 years in the community. We ourselves, my wife and I, we've been in our home for over 30 years. We are invested in Cliff Drive, but we live on the street. We are the, we are, we're all about improvement. This is the first time that we've actually heard, other than the postings that we saw regarding the builders' desire to build. We have concerns, because it is a residential community. We look at, we look at the location, and we have a number of concerns. Those concerns would be, it's not enough information for us as community, as those who live in the community. What type of properties are they planning to build? Whether the duplexes, triplexes? How many units will be built? As there's no sidewalks in that area, the traffic is already extremely crowded. There is no other properties. Yes, the Kelly Miller Smith Towers are located on our street, but there are no other properties that are zoned RM15 in our community. I have other members of our community who are here. He mentioned a family, a community meeting. Not a person on our street have been contacted or received any information from the potential builders. So, we'd like to address that. We're all about progress, but we're also about doing it the right way and communicating with those of us who live in that community. And to put multifamily housing there will, basically, we think it will not help our community.
Thank you.
My name is Rolanda Amos. I'm at 2124 Cliff Drive, and I am diagonal from the proposed project. And some of my concerns are, it's only one builder or one developer here, but it's two parcels. Is the owner, the other owner, I mean, how can they do that with two different owners? How can they, you know, propose to build on two different parcels with two different owners, and it's only one here? And also, that putting a multifamily unit or multifamily project on that street, that street is a cut-through street, and I guess it's been labeled a cut-through street for over 70 years, to cut through from Buena Vista to Clarksville Highway. And people speed up and down those, that street, and to add a multifamily will increase the traffic. There are no sidewalks, and like was mentioned, the assisted living is at the top, and those tenants do walk down the street, because there are no sidewalks. And so, to get to the bus stop, to get to the store, wherever they have to go, so it will increase more traffic, and not only that, it'll increase the instability for the neighborhood, that community, and it'll just bring a different vibe outside of homeownership. So, I recommend disapproval of this particular rezoning. Thank you.
I have two minutes. State your name and address.
Junior Cosby. I live at 2125 Cliff Drive. My home is right next to the 2127 potential development that they're speaking of. I do disapprove of this development, because of, as stated from Kenneth and Rolanda before me, I have the same concerns, the exact same concerns, and also, let's see, what would be the, I guess, the structure of the home? There hasn't been any outline of the, like, the designs, or the, would it affect our community as our property taxes? All right. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? Two minutes. State your name and address.
Hello. Planning Commission. My name is Almer Clemmer. I live directly across the street at 2128 Cliff Drive. I bought my house about four and a half years ago in this neighborhood, and absolutely love it. My concerns are that in the morning and evening, it is almost impossible to get off of our street because of it being used for a cut-through and to try to access either Buena Vista or Clarksville Highway. Also, we as a group do not want tall and skinnies over there, because all the houses on that street are all one-story, except for a couple, and just the density of it. Another concern I have is, since I've had my house, I have had to put in a new sewer line this year because of sewer backup, when, like Harvey, or earlier this year in February, we had a lot of rain, and come to find out that that did not help my situation. It's the sewer in the city street is not big enough, and the storm drain runs into it. Also, between me and the property next door is a storm slough that goes into the river, and two places in the, in it, since I've been there, have collapsed, but the city says that it's not their problem to fix it, that we as homeowners have to fix it. And when it rains a lot, I mean, it's a river like two to three feet tall in that thing. The storm slough is like five feet tall, and it's like a river like two or three feet tall. So, you're going to have a lot more water coming through there. But my main opposition is just we do not need six houses right there. I'm not opposed to the fact that you can put four houses that is zoned for two houses on each lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? You'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
So far, it's like the tall and skinny, it is a larger lot. It has an 85-foot front, so we could do like wider homes. Sidewalks, planting, that will be imposed by zoning, so a lot of that will be determined by them and not me, so far as those guidelines. They did recommend a traffic study, so that would kind of help take care of that part. So far, as a community meeting, I was speaking of, it wasn't a community meeting for me, it was for like the bridges and the things that they're talking about on Young's Lane, so I wasn't speaking of community meeting for this particular plan. So, other than that, I really don't know what I can build myself until zoning say what I can build. They determine the outline, they determine sidewalks, and so on and so forth. So, that's why there is no type of concept plan or anything that I have to present today.
Okay. We'll declare the public hearing closed. No, I'm sorry. We're, we're done. And, let's see. I'm going to start down there with Commissioner Blackshear. He did escape, didn't he?
Well, I guess the first issue is that there wasn't a community meeting, so a lot of the questions that the neighbors have just have not been able to be addressed. And I've said this before, but I do think the best plans happen when there are neighbors involved. And I mean, it sounds like you do have a vision for what you would build with the rezoning, but just no one in the neighborhood seems to know about it. So, it would be helpful if there was a community meeting. So, maybe there could be a deferral to allow community meeting to happen. I have no idea what that means at the council level, if there's any type of impact. Okay. So, there would be, so there's no negative impact to the developer to have a community meeting? So, maybe that's something that should happen. I have a question about, there was mention of the tall and skinnies. I have a question about what the proposed rezoning would do to the height allotment?
So, the current zoning is R8. R8 permits three stories already. So, a lot of the times, while you may have an existing pattern of one-story homes in a neighborhood, the underlying in zoning permits more. And so, R8 does permit three stories. RM15A, it would permit a certain height that a build-two line, and then a step back, and then additional height. And Sean, I think, has just looked that up and can answer that for us.
So, in the RM15A zoning district, the height would be limited to 20 feet in the build-two zone? And then, if the building were to step back 15 feet, the maximum height would be 35 feet. So, again, the existing zoning doesn't have a limit in feet, it just mentions stories. But this would be capped at 35 feet, which might yield something similar.
So, this may actually be a little bit more restrictive in regards to height than what's permitted now?
Right. That's an important point to make, because a lot of times, we think just because the houses look a certain way, that they're not allowed to go taller, but the current zoning could already allow it to go taller. So, the proposed rezoning doesn't seem like it would negatively impact you on that front. There is also a lot of mention about traffic, and it looks like in the staff report, there is a statement that says traffic study may be required. Is there a requirement?
So, typically, that will be a standard for a straight zone change, because they would evaluate it based on the number of units. Typically, a traffic study is not required until you reach 75 units.
Okay. So, there's, there is not a traffic study required?
Public Works can require traffic studies in other instances at their discretion, but the trigger is generally 75.
Okay. And then, there was talk about sidewalks. There's senior living nearby and just safety with that. And the developer mentioned sidewalks being triggered by zoning codes. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Sidewalks in this location would be triggered by the sidewalk requirement that's outlined in the zoning code. And so, that's something that would be reviewed at building permit phase through the codes department.
That was all very helpful. I think, I'm still back at my initial thought, that a community meeting would have been very helpful and could be still very helpful to happen. And since there's no council bill, it doesn't seem like it would negatively impact the developer to have a community meeting.
They'll submit the same questions that I have, but I would recommend a deferral. I think a lot of their questions could be answered if they just had a more of an understanding of what your vision is. It doesn't seem like it would, by what's been presented, I think it would be appropriate for this location. But since most of the questions that the community was asking were just kind of simple questions, that probably they may all actually be in favor, or at least, at least they'd have a better understanding of what you're proposing. So, as far as, the only question I did have is, does it, what does zone change? Would it be six per parcel, right? That's what it would change to? Could, could possibly change? What was it?
A total for the entire acreage.
So, 3-3?
Well, we look at it as holistically. If the site was developed holistically, it would permit six units. Now, that is always dependent on meeting setbacks, parking, all of those sorts of other things that you have to meet under the zoning code, but the maximum density would be six in totality.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any other questions. I would also support a deferral for a community meeting, but I guess I'll...
Mr. Gobble?
I'm pretty much in agreement with the other Commissioners. Community meeting makes sense.
Commissioner Elam? Hey. Like to make a motion? They like to make a...
I can make a motion. I move that we defer this item for, is one meeting? Would that be sufficient? When is the next meeting?
August 22nd. So, we do have a bit more of a lead. Yeah.
So, I move that we defer this item for one meeting so that the developer can hold a community meeting.
Any other discussion? All in favors? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Again, just one meeting deferral, August 22nd, and back here, correct? Okay. Thank you. Item 26. Okay. Item 26 is a request to rezone from one- and two-family residential R10 to residential multifamily RM9. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The property is located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Hill Street. Hill Street is a platted 20-foot-wide, unimproved right-of-way. The surrounding area is zoned R10 and contains a mix of one- and two-family structures, as well as several vacant properties. The site has been developed with a two-story duplex. The land development pattern in the area is largely suburban with cul-de-sacs and winding streets, and a number of streets in the vicinity are unbuilt or substandard. The subject site is located on a corner and surrounded by existing duplexes in an SP that, to the north, that permits four units. The policy for the subject site is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving. This policy describes the development patterns in the areas having higher densities than classic suburban neighborhoods, with smaller lot sizes and a broader range of housing types, providing housing choice. Given the size and the location of the lot and the surrounding context of primarily two-family residential units, the proposed RM9 zoning will meet the intention of the policy to provide more housing choices in an existing suburban neighborhood. In the intent of the policy and the surrounding development, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing as the applicant here.
My name's Ashley Becker. I'm actually here with Red River Development, sitting in for him, because he couldn't be here. Just going along with what they said, we're really not changing much. It's pretty much staying the same. It's not changing the amount of structures that can be built, just maybe making a more appealing zoning for the property. The neighborhood is starting to be developed. They're starting to put newer homes in the area. Most of it that's over there, or around where this home is located, is actually already multifamily duplexes or rentals that are over there. So, not really changing much, just making a potentially more appealing zoning.
Can you state your address? I realize we got your name.
Oh, yeah. It's 864 Kirkwood Avenue. I live in 12 South.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone here speaking in support? Anyone speaking in opposition? You can come forth, and you'll have two minutes, and state your name and address. And for the applicant, you'll have two minutes for rebuttal. If you guys have comments that you want to direct to the Planning Commission, that would be great. Come forth, we'll answer your questions.
It's already on. Okay. It was my understanding, I'm at 3213 Alpine Avenue. It was my understanding that this is to change the zoning to allow for apartment complexes of up to nine units, and we are opposed to that. Part of our concerns are that we currently have a great number of rentals in the area, which has led to several problems. The properties themselves are not being kept up very well. The population is somewhat transient, in and out. We often don't know who our neighbors are, and by the time we get to know them, they're on their way out again. We also have a large group of children who are roaming the neighborhood unattended and whose parents cannot be contacted and who are locked out of their current properties. Our family has hosted up to nine children at a time for extended periods of days, where we cannot get ahold of parents. The rental properties are locked out against the children, and nobody seems to know where they belong. We're concerned that by changing this district zoning to a higher density, that problem will just increase. We are also concerned about the number of cars in the area. We have no sidewalks. Most of the properties, most of the rental properties don't have any yards. So, there is no place for the children to play, except the vacant lots. A lot of the rental properties, we have identified cars that regularly go in and out, sometimes eight or 10 times an hour per car, per property, which makes us wonder what's going on at those properties that need quite so much traffic. But regardless, they, they come in and out very quickly, and our children don't have anywhere to get off the roads. My last concern was about crime in the area. We had nine calls to the police in the last six months. The nearest apartment complex had 41 crimes. Our crimes were half-and-a-half split between assault, sorry, domestic, and alcohol. The crimes at the nearest apartment complex were violent arson and theft. So, thank you for...
Thank you.
Hi. My name is George Lopez. I live in 3213 Alpine Avenue. So, yeah, I am opposed to, to change it to more apartments. Now, is, we're like, you know, the last block of the area, so we have cars coming fast. I am the dad of 11 kids. They like to be in the street, and besides, we have our neighbors that they come to our house, too, and they play with my kids that are in the streets. So, with these people, that they come and rent for a little bit and they leave, we don't get to know them. But my kids are in the street, and then some of the neighbors, they just come along and kind of drive fast, and, and we don't get to know them. We don't have sidewalks, and I think it's going to be a bad idea.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in opposition? Would the applicant like to take your two minutes for rebuttal?
So, with hearing theirs, we're not trying to increase the amount of units. We're not trying to make any more than is really already there. So, it's really just trying to make it a more appealing zoning, but not add traffic. We're not trying to add extra tenants. You know, we're trying to keep around the same of what it already is, just kind of changing it, like I said, to be appealing for the future, but not add more density. So, we're wanting to keep the same amount of density that's already there.
Okay. We'll declare the public hearing closed. I don't have too many choices about which way to go tonight. Commissioner Moore, would you like to go first?
Sure. I think to the neighbor's point, I think there were some questions about apartment buildings, but that's not realistic here. There's only two units that can really go on this property with this zoning, correct?
Sure. A couple things. So, RM9, the nine is nine units per acre. And so, based on this size of this lot, it would only permit two units. Now, the question of whether or not, I think there was some discussion about rental versus ownership, but that's not a function of zoning. Occupancy is not a function of zoning, and is not something that would be controlled by the current zoning, which is R8, versus RM9. Any of those could be rented depending on what the person that owns and builds it wants to do. And so, occupancy isn't a function of zoning. And so, this would just permit a maximum of two units, based on the size of this property.
So, that could be two single-family homes or a duplex, possibly?
Correct.
Okay. I think with all that being said, this meets policy, so I'm in favor.
Mr. Gobble?
Well, currently, by right, how many units can they have on it?
Two.
We're not changing the density at all. Okay. I'm, I'm, uh, agree with Commissioner Moore.
Tom?
No.
Blackshear?
I don't have anything really to add. I see there's some new development that was happening, apparently, across the street. I would recommend, though, that the developer just seek out the neighbors and tell them, show them what they really do. They may be more in favor of it if you describe more specifically what your plan. It sounds like it may be more in line, but just, probably just don't, they seem like they just have some questions about it. So, I would encourage a meeting with your neighbors. But with that, I will make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Proper motion? Second? Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion carries. All right. Shortest meeting we've had in a little while. But we're not done. We still have a couple of other things. And I forget the order in which we do our things. Which order do we do them? Well, so, we don't have our parks person here. We do have our historic person here. Do we, do you have any reports? Okay. Ms. Director, we've lost our council member, so we don't have his report. Any updates from you?
Just thank you, as always, for your support and your service, and we'll see you next meeting here at this location. And then, after that, we'll be back at the old home site for the foreseeable future. Yes. Our own, yeah.
All right. With that, I adjourn our meeting.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.